You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 6th meeting for the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
How are you?
Good evening and good afternoon, good evening, and welcome to the City of Michigan City Common Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 6th, 2025. I would like to start off by asking all to please silent all electronic devices. And if you will, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
In the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternally.
Madam Clerk, before you begin roll call, I would just like to bring to your attention that Councilman Priz Belinsky did notify me that he would not be in attendance this evening. And if you would, please withdraw call.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and no one absent.
You, Madam Clerk, for the record, you have one absent. Councilman Priz Belinsky.
Right. Oh, sorry.
So next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes for the regular council hybrid and zoom April 15th, 2025.
Sumo.
Support.
We have a motion by Dr. Cora and a second by Mr. Beatry. Madam Clerk on the vote.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Joseph.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Approval of the minutes have been approved and passed. Reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees? There are none. The Finance Committee meeting. The Michigan City Finance Committee met on today at 6:00 PM. There was a quorum present. There was a revised Michigan City Riverboat and Boyd Claims Docket for May 6th, 2025. Riverboat Fund, $2235. Riverboat EFT Fund, $2235. Rainy Day Fund, $2236, $18,550. Boyd Development Fund, $2504. And these funds was for, that has been prior approval by the council for the annexations, for Schneider Geometrics, Reith and Riley, and for the sewer line project. I would like to entertain a motion for the total claims of $18,550.
Sumo.
Support.
A motion by Dr. Cora, second by Mr. Beatry. Madam Clerk on the vote.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Finance Committee claims has been approved. The City of Michigan City 2025 Riverboat Rainy Day Fund, Statement of Cash Position, fiscal year to date, April 30th, 2025. Fund type, $2235. Riverboat Fund, ending balance, $1,363,081.36. Fund type, $2236. Rainy Day Fund, $1,848,763.71. The grand total, ending balance, $3,211,845.71. That completes the Finance Committee meeting. Next on the agenda, reports from boards and commissions. Are there any reports from boards and commissions? Councilwoman Moldenauer?
Yes, I want to take the opportunity to acknowledge Andy Janz Davis, who is the immediate past Chair of the Michigan City Sustainability Commission. And Andy, I want to acknowledge you for more than a job well done. You had big shoes to fill and you overflowed those shoes. And really want to thank you personally for your commitment, your enthusiasm, and your enrollment of so many more people, not only within Michigan City, but all of Northwest Indiana into the cause of sustainability and also into the cause of recycling. So just from the bottom of my heart, thank you. We're going to miss you tremendously, but I know you're not far away at all. And we're going to count on you for another wonderful Earth Month extravaganza in 2026. And this year, I want to let everybody know, we had over 500 participants. So when we started, we started at 200. The next year, we had 300. Last year, we had 400. And this year, we had 500. So I'm looking forward to that 600 next year because it looks like we're on an upward trend. So Andy, just thank you.
Are there any other reports from boards and commissions? There are none. Reports of special or select committees. Are there any reports of select or special or select committees at this time? There are none. Moving on. Reports from Mayor or other city officers and departments. Mr. Al Wallace, if you would please come up at this time. And if you would state your name and your department.
Good evening, council members. My name is Al Wallace with the Sanitary District of Michigan City. Thank you for allowing me to be on the agenda here tonight. Want to provide update on various stormwater activities going on in the city. The city operates under IDEM MS4 permit, municipal separate storm sewer system permit. One of those requirements is to provide annual update to boards or local officials about the MS4 program activities. So the mayor asked me to present tonight to the city council of some of those activities. I did provide a handout for council members this evening. It should be at your seats. On the cover here, there are several pictures. These pictures were placed there intentionally to describe kind of a photo explanation of the six different components of the MS4 program. The photo on the top row with the canoe shows how one of the required minimum control measures, MCMs, is public participation and involvement. So the city and sanitary district park department have partnered over the years to do Trail Creek Week. And as part of those activities, canoes are brought to the city. We work with the school system to take kids on canoe paddles through the creek. So that's one way that we try and engage with our youth to get them connected with the water resources in Michigan City. In the second row on the left is a picture of some water quality analysis going on. If we were to go into Trail Creek and get a sample of water, we would then challenge the kids to look in that water for little bugs, different things living in the water. Certain types of bugs only live in dirty water and other bugs only live in clean water. So by the kids identifying the bugs and checking the charts to see what type of bugs they are, they can get an assessment of how clean or dirty Trail Creek is. So that's part of the MCM 1 and 2, public education and outreach. The second row on the right is a picture of Trail Creek head wall. You can see a pipe exiting into the creek. That's one of the stormwater outfalls. So as part of MCM 3, illicit discharge detection and elimination, we're required every five years to inspect every single outfall into Trail Creek in all the tributaries to Trail Creek and Lake Michigan. So we'll actually be in a boat going up and down Trail Creek, looking at these outfalls. So that's a picture of one of those. In the third row on the left, we have a picture of MCM 4, construction site stormwater runoff management. So based on Indiana laws, any construction site that disturbs one or more land, one or more acres of land disturbance, they're required to do erosion and sediment control. Smaller building sites also have similar requirements. So this is a photo of one of the instances we saw within the city. This particular site was issued a written notice of violation. They were given a short time to get it cleaned up. When we did the reinspection, after that timeframe, everything was cleaned up. So just kind of give you an example of the purpose of managing construction sites is to try and avoid that situation we see here in this photo. In the third row on the right, we have MCM 5. That's noted as post-construction stormwater runoff. So as we change vegetated areas to impervious surface, we'll have additional runoff leaving that site. So there's requirements that detention basin and retention ponds be placed. So this was during an inspection of one of those post-construction stormwater facilities. And then on the bottom, we have kind of a snapshot of our GIS system. The green lines are sanitary sewers and the blue lines are storm sewers. So you can see Walker Street in this particular location, we have a 36-inch diameter storm sewer traversing under the street. So a part of MCM 6, we have pollution prevention and good housekeeping, where we have to inspect and clean all of our stormwater infrastructure. So just kind of a snapshot, wanted to kind of bring to life the different things we're doing with our MS4 program. On page two, just want to provide a brief overview and I'll kind of go through the rest of this material pretty quickly. The MS4 program, the whole purpose of that is to manage our stormwater discharges in order to protect public health, existing water uses, and aquatic life. And a lot of this kind of sprang from what we know now as the Clean Water Act that originally started as the Federal Water Pollution Control Act of 1948. You can see in the picture adjacent to that in the top left is a big black billowing smoke. That was a picture of the Cuyahoga River in Cleveland on fire in 1952. So at that point, it kind of raised alarms that there's different types of chemicals and pollutants that are getting in stormwater into our rivers of a quantity that could actually start a river on fire. So that was in 1952. And then in 1972, the Federal Water Pollution Control Act then was superseded by the Clean Water Act, which is the federal guidelines that govern our current stormwater program. And then that provides provisions for fines and violations if there are any issues with meeting those requirements. And then in the state of Indiana, those federal stormwater regulations are implemented at the local level through IDEM, through the municipal separate storm sewer general permit, which was last issued in 2021. That's a five-year permit, so soon IDEM is going to start updating that permit again to be able to reissue that in 2026. And then we'll have expanded guidelines to implement locally after that point. The second row there, we just want to, you know, kind of stress the importance of Lake Michigan. National studies have shown polluted stormwater runoff is the leading source of water body impairment, mostly in our streams and ditches, but also our lakes. With Lake Michigan in particular, over 40 billion gallons of water annually are used by residents in Northwest Indiana, according to IDEM. So it's a significant source of water. So we need to do whatever we can to protect it. So in the yellow box, the first two minimum control measures that we're required to implement locally talk about educating the public about the impacts of stormwater runoff. So that speaks to the public education outreach. The third row there, we talk about chemicals. Different chemicals can cause harm in different ways into little tiny organisms, including on up to humans. We've got a picture there of the White River fish kill from 1999, showed where some toxic substance got into the White River and ended up killing fish. So as part of the MS4 program, we have to implement procedures to detect, address, and eliminate illicit discharges into our conveyances. So that's why we travel up and down Trail Creek to look at the discharges, to see if we have any water containing chemicals coming into Trail Creek. The next box talks about sediment. The number one pollutant of water bodies by volume is sediment. As sediment can get in our streams, that can negatively, again, impact aquatic life in there. And also sediment can build up into detention ponds and our streams reduce the flow volume. So there's a lot of negative impacts of sediment. And to combat that, we have two measures. We have to develop and administer an erosion and sediment control program on active construction sites. And then we also have to implement a program to address increased discharges of post-construction stormwater runoff from new development and redevelopment. So at times, you may think there's a lot of areas of the city that are greenfield areas, maybe on the outskirts of the city. So if anyone wants to develop one acre or more, we have to look at those different water runoff calculations. But also, if there's redevelopment throughout the town, we have to look at those areas as well. So we're trying to be able to handle runoff from any types of development that could increase stormwater runoff when the project's done. And then lastly, a very important one is pollution prevention. There's two ways city MS4 programs are required to combat pollution. One is at our municipal facilities. So at central services, we may have salt storage piles for winter road use. So a best management practice to manage that is to put it in a salt barn, which the city has. So the precipitation does not hit the salt and runoff into our streams. And then also, the pollution prevention talks about our storm sewers and storm conveyances. So we're required to visually inspect the surface of all streets once every five years, have regular measures to do street sweeping and those types of things. So the pollution prevention, MCM 6, is very important to us to try and keep pollution out of the water. The next few pages, I'll just kind of glance over quickly, but wanted to provide to the council the official report that we submitted to IDEM back in early April. So for all those six minimum control measures, we talked about public education, illicit discharge detection, it's construction stormwater aspects. It's a self-monitoring program. So as we go through the year, we're continually gathering data on what we've done in terms of inspecting construction sites, inspecting outfalls. And then every year, we have to report to IDEM all the different activities that we did in the six different control measures. So IDEM prepared this prescribed report. A lot of it is kind of fill in the blanks. Page one is just the general permit information. Based on the Congressional Federal Register per municipality, the MS4 operator is the highest of elected officials, so that would be the mayor. So the mayor is identified as the MS4 operator. Then we have the additional staff below that. Page two of nine, we summarize some of the activities that were done, public education and outreach. We talk about some of the general public and school activities we did, some of the public meetings we've had. On page three of nine, we talk about our inspection of outfalls. During the first three years of the permit, 40 of the city outfalls, a little over half were inspected. We have 30 to complete in the next 18 months. So we're looking to get those completed by the end of this year to be able to complete that a year ahead of schedule before the end of the fifth year. And then there's information about a couple of the potential listed discharges we were contacted about and we've investigated. And then number 10, at the very bottom on page three, there's a box for the MS4 revised and adopted new IDD ordinance. So the status on that is we've been working to get the local ordinances updated, both for IDDE and our construction stormwater programs. So the Sanitary District approved potential revised ordinance in January this year. And we've been working through the Plant Commission, attending the 225 and 325 meetings. And we're on target to potentially have that approved at the end of this month. One of the more complicated things with the ordinance is there's many ties between the stormwater ordinance and differing zoning documents. So we've had to go through a pretty extensive check. Skylar and Plant Commission Attorney Hale have gone through and worked with Amber as well, Amber LaPage. So we're on track to get this approved in May, the end of May. And then we'll be ready to come to the council in June, too. We'll work with the council on scheduling and the mayor on getting that ordinance adopted sometime this summer. So when that's done, we'll be all caught up with all of our ordinance updates. So that's just a quick update on that. We anticipate having council workshop on that as well to describe what the current ordinance is, how we have to change the ordinance to be compliant with new permit requirements. So we'll have that information available to talk about in workshops. Page, section four, page four of nine, it talks about active construction sites. What we've been focusing on in the MCM 4 is plan review from both stormwater management perspective as new developers are coming in. And I have some documents to summarize that. And then also reviewing stormwater pollution prevention plans that identify how projects will protect their work site when they're under construction. Page five talks about the post-construction. Again, there's a little summary of the ordinance post-construction. Ordinance language will be changing as well, so that's part of the new ordinance put together. Section six talks about owned and operated DMPs. The city Sanitary District has four what are called aqua swirl, large oversized manholes that help capture sediment and debris in our storm sewers. So we inspect those once a quarter to be able to remove any sediment that we've caught or debris that we're trying to keep out of Trail Creek in Lake Michigan. So we're monitoring those pretty closely. And then section six, on page six of nine, talks about material we've removed from catch basins and then also the street sweeping program. Typically, the street sweeping follows through the wards. Once one ward gets done, the next ward gets done. During spring cleaning, sometimes they'll go back to an area that just completed spring cleaning and then go back and do some street sweeping to kind of clean up if there's any other debris left. So we have the tonnages removed there. In section 10, we talked about our municipal facilities, inspecting those facilities. We've identified that the past MS4 coordinator resigned in April of 2024. And then after that staff departed, Christopher Burke was engaged to help with activities for the remainder of '24. And then the Sanitary District hired staff in January this year. So we're now getting caught up on facility inspections and all the other aspects of MS4 programs. So we've explained that to IDEM. And then on page seven of nine, at the very bottom, item six talks about some of the activities that will be ongoing this year due to our annual review of some of the progress made in '23, '24. So you can see there's a number of plans, the listed discharge plan, standard operating procedure manual for construction, post-construction runoff, and also how we manage our facilities. All those documents are in the process of being updated this year in 2025. So we'll be up to date on that. Page eight is just kind of final summary. They wanted to, there's an option there to talk in item eight about successful projects. We talked about our work with the Michigan City Park Department, bringing the canoes here, how the students were very engaged. And that kind of completes the report. The next page, nine of nine, is blank. That was blank on the item form. And then the next document is a copy of the 4-4 email from IDEM back to our consultants and the city. They received a review, the plan we just went, the report we just went through, and report for 2024. It was received, reviewed, and no deficiencies found. So that kind of completed our reporting progress, our self-reporting process for 2024. All MS4 programs have to be audited once every five years. So Michigan City is on the audit cycle for this year. So we're scheduled in October to have an item audit person come and review all these different six components, all the activities we identified in the annual report. I didn't believe we wanted to see the actual physical documents to back that up. So we look forward to having that audit at the end of this year. And then we should be good for another five years. And then just a couple of things before I wrap up, wanted to show, so that kind of documents what's been happening in the most recent past. After that yellow divider page, there's a figure one, Stormwater Permit Approval, Project Termination Sign Out Process. This is a flow process that we're proposing to include in the updated stormwater ordinance. It's a document I've made up several years ago to help identify the two different specific aspects of applying for a permit, how that works, and then actually implementing the permit from when the first shovel of land is disturbed till it's completed. So all of the solid boxes identify activities by an entity. The dash boxes are actual documents that are submitted or issued. The gray boxes are by applicants and all the white boxes are by city staff. So if a developer is looking to come to Michigan City in the future, they can look at the stormwater ordinance and see all the different requirements. Once we get to construction, it's very important that they understand before they turn dirt, they have to have a pre-construction meeting to make sure they're following all the sediment erosion control items. And then towards the bottom, once they stabilize the site, they cannot terminate their construction permit with IDEM until they get local approval from Michigan City staff that verifies they have 70% uniform vegetation on their site. All debris has been removed, all garbage is removed, and there's no more construction activity. So IDEM, in their last permit cycle, really tightened down the ability for contractors to just kind of leave a site when they think it's ready. So now there's a formal process to go through where there's local review and approval. And then the next couple of pages, we have this Construction Stormwater Pollution Prevent checklist. So when a developer comes to town and wants to develop a project, once they're getting, before they can actually start construction, they have to submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So this is the actual document we use based on the IDEM review form. You can see on page two of the form, two, three, and four, there's three components. Section A provides a summary of what the existing site looks like. What are the, where are the parcel boundaries? Where are there any, what are the soil types? Are there wetland plants? Are there floodways, flood plains, existing topography? So section A kind of says what's there now. Section B says what is the contractor going to do for stable construction entrance, sediment control, so on and so forth. And section C talks about that post-construction, what's going to be there long term? Is there going to be a detention basin, a retention basin, swales, infiltration basins? So these are all, there's about over 30 items that we do a detailed check on. Typically, I would do those reviews. If there's any comments, we make the comments, send them back to the engineers. They review them, send them back. They do not get approval to move forward till all these boxes are checked and ready to go. So that's our QAQC to make sure stormwater pollution prevention plans are in order. And then the last sheet is working with Skylar. We needed some clarity to work with developers on what they need to submit for drainage reports. So going through the various zoning ordinances, just more specifically Article 20, we have all these different items that we let the developers know they have to do so we can do our complete review of their stormwater drainage plan. And then a couple of items moving forward is at the direction of Public Works Director Wendy Vasche, we're looking at ways to utilize our current GIS system to do improved management of our MS4 data. We had Housing Associates do an analysis of different retention, detention basins around the city a couple of years ago. So we're now looking to import that data into our GIS system, working with IT Director Andy Matanek. The city is rolling out a new work order management system, the Kinton system. So we now have regular quarterly work orders that are generated every quarter, sent to our collection staff to go out and clean our water quality units. We're putting those on GIS. So we're just looking at ways to kind of improve our efficiency and then be able to prove to IDEM during audits that we are doing these six required things we're doing. Because kind of the basic philosophy is if it's not written down, if you don't have paperwork to back it up, it didn't happen. So we're using GIS, Kinton Work Order Management System to document all this stuff. Also, with the approval of Public Works Director, we work with Antero Group to submit a grant to the Great Lakes Environmental Justice Thriving Communities Grant Program, operated by the Minneapolis Foundation. And that was for planning to look at the different watershed plans, trail plans, connectivity plans, to engage various aspects of the local. to engage various aspects of the local neighborhoods and communities to tie all these plans together. So if we have a Trail Creek watershed plan that's focused on water quality, how can we tie that to a trail system throughout the city? How can we get people from neighborhoods via trails to Trail Creek to access some of the amenities we have along Trail Creek? So we should know in about a month if we are successful or not in getting that grant. And it's kind of timely coming here tonight because uh, Councilman Coulter gave me the watershed mixer flyer where uh, people be getting together with uh, Marion County uh, watershed people. Um, now that the Santer district has staffed uh, MS four position, uh, I've spoken with Park Director Shannon Eason where we can uh, more fully engage with some of the watershed planning and kind of connect the dots between what the park system's doing and uh, what we're doing from an MS four perspective. Uh, so a lot of exciting things going on. Uh, it'll be a busy summer, but uh, we're excited, ready to go. Um, got a lot of tools to help us. So want to provide that update to the council to kind of give you in broad strokes what's going on. I anticipate being back here uh, later this summer to talk about uh, the stormwater ordinances because that's a requirement we have to do uh, based on our MPDS permit. I'll probably be back here after Labor Day uh, to schedule a city uh, council workshop on the Lafayette Barker project. Uh, Michigan City was originally a combined sewer community, uh, probably 90 for 95% or so of the original combined sewers have been separated. We still have a number of combined sewers in the March School area. Uh, we have some long-range plans to address that situation. So I'll be working uh, with the city administration of the departments this summer to kind of come up with the overall summary to educate the council after Labor Day on potential ways to address that situation. And then either late this year, early next year, I'll kind of provide an update of all the MS four activities we did this year in anticipation of next year's annual report.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council? Uh, Councilman Coulter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, President, excuse me. Uh, Al, you're a fantastic person and I love all the work you're doing. Um, when I got involved with the Trail Creek Watershed Partnership, one of the things that we learned all the way is that in 2006, we wrote our first plan and you were a big part of that. Um, so I don't think people understand just how big of a, a part you are of keeping our clean, our water clean here in Michigan City. Um, we're all used to going out to the lake and being able to just immediately jump in. We don't have to look up if there's E. coli problems or anything. And you're a big part of that. So I just wanted to thank you for all you do here in Michigan City.
Oh, just in response to that, I'd like to joke that um, longevity has its perks. So I've been around a long time, so uh, worked on a lot of different things. So hopefully I can bring some of that experience to the city, back to the city.
Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this was very detailed and organized. This was wonderful. Thank you for presenting this. Uh, and this summer, as you're doing some of this testing, if possible, I'd love to come with you all and kind of learn about what everything you do.
Sure. We'll keep you updated on some of those activities.
Councilwoman Maldonour?
Yes, um, Al, I just want to thank you personally and professionally for all of the detailed and conscientious work that you do for our city to maintain clean waters here. Um, I also want to acknowledge the sanitary district for two really innovative projects that I think a lot of people in Michigan City may not know about. Um, one is the um, Strebo Pond um, project which took care of flooding on that side of town. And in process of taking care of that naturally, it created a very wonderful place for people to um, walk and exercise. And the other was the um, Cheney Run um, site. And that took care of um, pollution that was um, flowing directly into Trail Creek. And again, it's a wonderful site because people can go out there and fish. So um, it provided not only cleaner water, but also provided really amazingly awesome um, amenities for our citizens here. So I do have two questions and they are tied together. Um, one of them has to do with permeable pavements. Um, I don't think I've seen a lot of that in Michigan City with new parking lots that are being put in and other places that it could be used like on trails and stuff like that. And then the other is the um, planting of native species. Um, I saw your retention um, basin there and there was a lot of rock around it and I wasn't seeing a lot of vegetation there. So um, the first part of that is um, had these actually been instituted within Michigan City and if so, where that happened? And then also um, what the department is doing to encourage developers and builders to actually um, implement these um, natural solutions for um, floodwater control.
Mm-hmm. With regard to the permeable pavement, um, in the 2000s, we did a couple uh, demonstration projects on Barker Road uh, west of Washington. Uh, we did some sidewalk porous concrete. So that is concrete uh, with mostly aggregate. So it has pores where water can uh, infiltrate in there. Where we ran into issues with that was during, in driveway approaches, we did kind of where a tree lawn would have been that in a uh, commercial area that's really be hard, difficult to maintain, we put in the porous concrete and that held up pretty well. Where we did it in driveway applications, the repeated heavy vehicles really kind of destroyed that. We had to redo that with basic concrete. Uh, there are aspects, other cities have used it. Uh, City of South Bend on Western, as you're going into South Bend, they kind of redid that whole Western entrance way. Uh, the parking areas, they have permeable pavers, so big bricks laid with uh, some little gaps in between them. But then, once you do that, there's a significant amount of maintenance to it. Uh, you have to get a vacuum trucks which uh, to kind of suck out all the sand and debris buildup over time. And if you don't do that regularly, then those uh, gaps would fill up with uh, dirt and plug them up. Uh, with regard to native vegetation, uh, we used a lot of that out at the, the Cheney Run project. Um, the new ordinance does provide multiple options for using green infrastructure to solve stormwater drainage. And what we've done is uh, we've adopted the Okra Green Infrastructure Manual that has a wide range of green infrastructure practices with data sheets to guide designers on how to use that equipment. So while uh, the, the other aspect that some individuals are looking at is underground storage. Uh, so if we put these big kind of U-shaped, upside down U-shaped uh, plastic devices under parking lots, we create uh, open volume under the parking lots. So water would run off into those voids, either infiltrate into the ground if we have good soil conditions or uh, retain the water for a while and slowly release it to our storm sewers. So we've, we've tried uh, permeable pavements 20 years ago, ran into some difficulty with that. And then it gets into uh, the maintenance issues. So then we have to start planning for not only do we have budgets for maintaining our sanitary sewers, our storm sewers, uh, we're doing street sweeping. Then we'd have to create uh, funding to do management of native vegetation in some of these permeable pavings. So it's kind of a balance.
I specifically was referring probably to asphalt. So you've expanded my knowledge significantly in your answer. So I have seen some places where the permeable asphalt has been put down. And that was more my question, you know, when um, new buildings are coming in and they're putting in a massive parking lot, if that's a possibility to use the asphalt on those.
Sure. Mm-hmm. And then a couple of things you mentioned real quick too with Strevo Pond. Uh, that uh, facility, 40 acres, if I recall, I was able to remove 500 homes from a floodplain on the west, west side. So that was huge investment by the city and a huge improvement to the West Side neighborhood residents, plus also then a park amenity in the West Side where there are very few park amenities. And then uh, talk of kind of the Trail Creek watershed stuff, uh, I'd be remiss not to mention the Unity Foundation and Maggie Sparks. They provided the initial funding to be able to get the grant to do the 2006 Trail Creek watershed uh, plan. So there's um, as I've been able to bring a couple of little things here and there to try and move things forward, what's been very rewarding is the great number of people already here uh, doing other great things. So it's kind of connecting the dots and you know, hopefully we still, you know, can maintain that uh, open attitude of our residents to join in and then help us as we work through all these things.
Thank you so very much. I appreciated your answers.
Are there any other comments uh, from Mr. Wallace from the council at this time? There are none. Mr. Wallace, I thank you for this presentation. Um, this is something I will also have to reread to learn even more on as well. But I do thank you for your depth detail and the work that you do of keeping our water clean and safe as well.
Sure. If any council members have questions uh, between meetings from time to time, just uh, send me an email. We'll get that information back to you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, um, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions this evening?
There are no petitions this evening.
Madam Clerk on communications?
Correspondence was received in the office on April 17th from Eileen Mark regarding the proposed substance, substance abuse recovery home of offenders.
Madam Clerk, our first resolution for this evening?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Planning and Inspection Department of the General Fund 1101 for the year 2025 in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Um, in regards to this resolution, um, this is for the Planning and Inspection Department of the General Fund 1101.106. And the funds has already been budgeted. It's just a decrease um, from salary and wages of 40,000 just to be moved to increase their other contractual services of $40,000. Um, I would like to open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments at this time? If there are any public comments, I ask that you keep it to three minutes, three minutes. Are there any public comments on this resolution? Any public comments on this resolution? There are none. Public comments are closed. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council on this resolution? There are none. May I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dabney and a second by Mr. Nelson. Madam Clerk on the vote.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Maldonour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. And that motion carries. Madam Clerk, on our second resolution for this evening, please.
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana. Approving declaratory resolution and economic, economic development plan of the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission and Order of the Michigan City Plan Commission in connection with the Tryon Meadow Economic Development Area. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Are there any comments from the sponsor at this time?
Yes, um, this resolution is designed to create a housing TIF. This is the first housing TIF that we're creating here in Michigan City. And uh, Skylar and the developer are both here. They're going to probably get into some of this as we get into the ordinances uh, down the line because there's some, some other issues that will be talked about tonight. Uh, but what you need to know about the, the TIF and the way it's going to be set up, like our, our business TIFs, the way those work, if those tax dollars are put into the TIF, they're put back in and they're invested to do other projects and things of that sort. And what this housing TIF is going to do is actually come back and, and fund uh, infrastructure needs for this development. So that's the way this housing TIF is going to be set up uh, for this particular project. And um, that's what we're, we're having to go on here tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. I'd like to open it up for public comments on this resolution. Public comments on this resolution.
Hello, Council. Scott Mellon, 200 Kenwood Place. I've been following this development through the Planning Department and Economic Development. And this is really uh, Michigan City leading the way. This is one of the first uses in Indiana of a housing TIF, if not the very first one. And this is at no risk to the citizens of Michigan City or the General Fund. This is a developer-backed bond that allows him to build the infrastructure. So this $10 million bond will leverage a $50 million plus development, providing uh, 198 housing units that can house 400 to 500 people that also 75% of which will meet the um, federal guidelines to be of uh, workforce housing uh, based on uh, income guidelines. So this is by definition affordable housing for the working people of Michigan City. This is really good development, a really good um, funding mechanism, again, at no risk to the people or the General Fund of Michigan City. It's the, the risk is solely on the developer. It's just going through our, the, the ability of the municipality to create this TIF allows this mechanism to happen. It is complicated. It is Michigan City leading the way like we have done with our, our lift station. The Lake Street Lift Station also has a unique funding mechanism that is really slick. I find this nearly as slick. Um, and I think you should wholeheartedly endorse this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, the, this resolution, uh, Skylar York, Director of Redevelopment, the resolution is just the starting point. Uh, this is what enables us to actually move forward with the other pieces that Mr. uh, Councilman Dabney um, talked about, which you'll be hearing more about. This um, resolution is just, this, it's what allows the Redevelopment Commission to actually, it enables us to do, to move forward with all the rest of the pieces, if you will, which you'll hear about in a little while.
Thank you, Mr. York. Um, last opening for public comment on this resolution. There are none. Any comments from the council on this resolution? Mr. Beatry?
I'm, I'm uh, happy to hear the comments from the public because I had some reservations about this when I first read through it and, and it's very detailed. It's very thick and it's very legalese. So it's not easy to pour through it. Um, but there's a major distinction between the TIF that's going to be created by this project and the TIFs that we are more familiar with, which are a manufacturing type TIFs that are backed really by the city. The city has considerable risk if that project does not come to fruition. This, as uh, as the uh, member from the community uh, said, is backed, uh, the risk is on the developer, not the city. So although it's a considerable amount of money and it's a considerable TIF, it, it makes sense. And I agree, it's a good project. It's a project that's needed. We, we need good housing in Michigan City. And all of a sudden, out of nowhere, we seem to have multiple projects that are springing up all over the place that are providing good housing for the people of Michigan City. So I'm with you. I'm thumbs up on this, on this uh, resolution and I will be on the ordinance as well.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that uh, like uh, was mentioned out of the public, he has been following this. He's been at the Planning Commission meetings and, and heard us every step of the way. And uh, this is something positive uh, once again, that's coming into Michigan City. And I can't be more happy to support this uh, moving forward. And so we're going to get into bonding and bonding authority when the ordinance comes up here uh, to talk about some of that. But this is something good that's happening here in Michigan City and providing housing. Um, so I, I mean, I am really excited about this and to be the first to, to create this, our first time that we have a, a housing TIF. And the way it works, um, I'm really excited about seeing this project move forward.
Dr. Cora?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I have a comment.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a comment.
Councilman, Councilwoman Maldonour?
Thank you. Um, I hear a lot about what people call affordable housing in Michigan City. And I would more or less call this attainable housing. So this specifically is for those people who live in places like Valparaiso and Chesterton and surrounding communities. And they're actually commuting to come into Michigan City to work. So I think that distinction is extremely important that I would label this as an attainable housing project um, for those people that do have um, middle-income jobs, middle to upper-income jobs, and they're really wanting and desiring to live in Michigan City. And then the flip side of that is um, a number of people um, work within the Chicago area. And they're people that used to live in Michigan City and they would really strongly desire to be able to come back here and live here and do that commute into Chicago Monday through Friday, and they'd be very happy to do it with the one-hour commute now. So that's the, the niche group that this project is um, put together for, building for, and will be providing that housing for this group.
Councilman Dabney?
I'm sorry to, to make another comment on this, but from what uh, Councilwoman Maldonour said, just wanted to provide actual numbers uh, to what she was talking about attainable housing. Um, the developer has committed to hold 75% of these units at eighty percent to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. So this is, like she said, attainable housing, so this is, this is great. I mean, I am so happy about this, and I just wanted to add, put those numbers to what she said about why it's attainable, and you can see the numbers that I just presented there of what the developer has committed to do with us here in Michigan City. Thank you.
Dr. Cora, if you'd like to entertain, can I entertain that motion?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Is there a second? We have a motion by Dr. Cora and a second by Councilman Nelson. Madam Clerk, on the vote?
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
And Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have our first ordinance by title only on first reading, Madam Clerk, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of cities taxable economical development tax increment revenue bonds in one or more series relating to projects to be located in the Tryon Meadow Economic Development Area, the provision of proceeds therefore of to the Tryon Meadow LLC or an affiliate thereof, the establishment of an economic development target area, and approving authorizing other actions in respect thereto, and this is introduced by Ms. Tillman and Mr. Dabney.
Words from the sponsors, I would just like to say, in regards to this, thank you again, Mr. Mellon. Not only were you at all of the planning meetings, but you were also at the redevelopment meetings as well in regards to this and have not missed one, so the information and under his comments is accurate, and I also am in the agreement, so in regards to this bond, I would just like to say for the residents and for the community to know, this is not a city's bond, it is a development, developers' bond, and it will not impact our city TIFs. Is there any comments from the other sponsor? Councilman Dabney?
Not at this time, no.
I'd like to open it up for public comment, are there any public comments on this ordinance?
Good afternoon, Council, Skylar York, Director of Redevelopment. Would you like some additional information, or would you like for us to wait until another reading, or how far into it would you like to get, is my question?
If, if council does not have any comments at this time, I would say under the second reading, this will probably be carried over, well, it will be carried over to the second reading, and then if they look further into this, if they have any more questions that may develop from then, if they don't have any, when we come back to council comments.
Okay, if I, if I may just say a couple of things. You are correct, this will not be a city-backed, a city-backed bond, it will be a developer-backed bond, which is different than most bonds that we do for infrastructure. We did, we did a city-backed bond for the train station. This is a different type of mechanism, we actually went through our Economic Development Commission, which is a little different of how we're doing this, it's a different part of the state law that allows us to do this. What else can I say, it does not affect our bonding capacity, and it will not affect our ability to do future bonds or additional TIF revenues, not from any TIF is not pledged to this, nor is there a a tax implication upon the city, citizens of Michigan City that is pledged to this, okay, so just be very clear with that.
Thank you, Mr. York.
Yes, Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Just like I said at the last meeting, we really need to encourage these, because they're going to have families living in this, not only attainable housing, I really want to encourage it, enroll all your students that are going to be living there. Go to the Michigan City area schools, help boost our continuously declining enrollment we have there. We start building some winters, and I think this is a great project, I hope this all passes and goes through, and good luck, have a safe and successful project, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich.
Scott Mellon, Turner County Place, all the stuff I said before, because I was saying it at the wrong time, apparently. I was speaking to somebody in town the other day, and they're like, what is this, what does all this development get me? I don't see how it benefits me. And I find that difficult, with anybody with eyes, not to understand how this type of development helps all of the people in Michigan City. And as one of the council members just said recently, we have Mr. Beatry, we have all this development happening in town. I think most of us would agree that's directly attributable to the double-track project. That project is what has brought Michigan City to the attention of developers, and they all say that. That's why the double-track helps the people of Michigan City in part. In addition to this no-risk-to-us TIF that we're going to set up through these different things, there's something called a multiplier effect. So this developer is going to drop fifty million dollars in town. By the way, the infrastructure he builds with this TIF, the roads, sewers, and water will be Michigan City property. He builds it, he pays for it, we get it. So that's in addition to the city, another benefit to the city. For the fifty million dollars he's going to invest, there's a multiplier effect of, is it two or three X? The numbers are somewhere there, that's another hundred million dollars of economic activity happening in this town. And the final point here, with us enabling this TIF for his development bonds, we get a say in what he builds. If we weren't doing this, we wouldn't be able to ask for seventy-five percent of those housing units to be attainable housing. He would be able to build luxury housing like every other developer because that's where the money is. By us involving ourselves, we have some control in what's getting built. And I would remind people, what Councilwoman Maldenauer says, it is attainable. This is for people with jobs, middle-income jobs, teachers, firemen, policemen, that kind of thing. You've always needed a good job to get a mortgage, folks, you've always needed a job to go up. So it is attainable, and that's good. Again, I just encourage us to pass it, but we have to hammer the positives because, as we all know, there seems to be a dark cloud sometimes hanging over Michigan cities regarding people's attitudes towards these things. But it benefits all of us to have development after forty years of Rust Belt stagnation, thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment on this ordinance.
Paul Pris Malinsky, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. My concern with this is not so much the project or setting up this TIF. What I'm, what I'm sitting here thinking about is asking the Planning Department or anybody why this wasn't done on the properties on, is it four hundred and twenty acres or three twenty on the east side of town? Where we're, the city's putting up five point five million to run sewer and water out there, and these developers have nothing in the game. This guy, I gotta give him credit, he's putting some skin in the game. Now, on the other hand, you're going to be coming up here from the sanitary district to do a sewer project, where are you going to get the money from? Because the money is being spent out on the east side of town, and that developer has no skin in the game. Because I read the whole ordinance and everything in the minutes of those meetings, nothing was ever questioned by the developer, and that the city is held responsible for a lot of the development in that project, thank you.
Public comments are now closed, comments from the council? Dr. Cora?
Governor and President, over the years, last ten years, I have been looking forward to seeing new housing in our county and in our city, because over the years I have seen so many people who work here, they do not live in Michigan City because we have an old stock of housing, so we were badly in need of new housing. I think this will provide some new housing with new amenities, and which is also in the income range which Councilwoman Maldenauer said is attainable for young families, new college graduates. So I, I think this is wonderful to attract new young people into our community because, and that's the future of our community, and so I think this, this will be a positive development, I'm very excited about it, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other comments from the council? If there are none, this ordinance on first reading will be held over for second reading at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, on the next ordinance by title only on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Gulf Non-Reverting Fund twenty-five oh eight for the Parks Department, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Is there any comments by this, from the sponsor?
Yes, and what we're doing here, it says approving additional appropriation in the budget from the Gulf Non-Reverting Fund, and people who don't understand what a non-reverting fund is, these are funds, let's just say, for instance, they could sell something out of the gift shop, and money that is made goes into what's called a non-reverting fund, so at the end of the year, funds does not transfer back to the General Fund. It's allowed to stay with the Park Department so they can go and invest in, in more product or something like that for their gift shop and, and things of that sort, so this is money that has been churned through the Park Department, this is not new or additional money that's coming from our general fund, this is, these are dollars that would have been generated through the Park Department that are now being used and, you know, to, to do what they need to do with those funds, so I just wanted to really drive home the point that this is not new money that is coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of what we call a non-reverting fund that is controlled by the Park Department.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney, I'd like to open this up for public comment on this ordinance.
Evening, council members, I just wanted to give you a little background of why we're here, asking for an additional appropriation. Some of you might recall in twenty twenty-three, we had a consignment agreement with St. Andrew's Products to stock our merchandise. We only made about four thousand dollars off of that, so in twenty twenty-four, I came back to this council in February because I truly believed that we could be way more profitable if we took the operation in-house, could control the merchandise that we have for sale and the profit margins. So I'm happy to report in twenty twenty-four, we did have a net profit of about twenty-six thousand dollars, thirty-three percent margin. We did spend just under seventy-five thousand that you appropriated to us, and we had some leftover merchandise, that accounts for the difference. We had about twenty thousand dollars left in the pro shop over the winter to open in March. This was not put into our twenty twenty-five budget because it was an additional appropriation, so it wasn't in our budget worksheets to move forward into twenty twenty-five, so I would ask that you approve the additional appropriation, and then moving forward, it would just be a normal budget line item. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Easton from the council? Mr. Beatry?
I, I don't, all the questions that I would have had you just, just answered, I, I wanted to know, did this thing work out or not? Because I remember we moved away from St. Andrew and said we're going to do it ourselves, but I hadn't seen any data on that, so thank you for bringing that information tonight. And that's all I needed to know, there's a big difference between four thousand and forty-six thousand, great job.
Thank you. There are no other questions from the council, thank you, Ms. Easton?
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments on this ordinance? Public comments on this ordinance, there are none, public comments are closed, are there any comments from the council on this ordinance? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council, there are none, this ordinance on first reading will carry over for second reading at the next council. Madam Clerk, if you would, on ordinance on second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending the zoning map of the City of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, to rezone real property located south of Tryon Road approximately one-fourth mile west of the intersection of Royal Road and Tryon Road, and a half a mile east of the intersection of South Carwick Road and Tryon Road from the R one B, single-family residential zoning district classification to R two B townhouse and R three A, low-rise multiple-family residential zoning district classification. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, and as you all recall, this started in the Planning Commission, where we were, you know, doing the rezoning to allow for the different types of housing that will be developed out there, Tryon Meadow. And so with us doing that rezoning, this is going to make room for townhouses, apartments, and single-family homes all within that development, and so once again, you know, like I said it before, we're moving forward here in Michigan City with another development, and I'm happy to see this go on.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney, I'll open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments on this ordinance?
Scott Mellon, Turner County Place, I love development, sorry. Really briefly, mixed development like this is a healthier development, it's much better than a bunch of single-family houses on quarter-acre lots. Increased density is, is more sustainable, and when you have different housing types, you get different blends of people and family types, and that makes for a healthier community. Again, I recommend you approve this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mellon. Any public comments on this ordinance? Last call for public comments on this ordinance. Public comments are now closed, any comments from the council? Any?
I have.
Councilman Dabney?
Yes, I would like to waive the rules or suspend the rules and do second and third reading on this ordinance tonight.
Second.
There is a motion to suspend the rules to have second and third reading on, tonight on this ordinance, and we have a second by the Dr. Cora?
Yes.
Dr. Cora. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, on third reading on this ordinance, please?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the zoning map of the City of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, to rezone real property located south of Tryon Road approximately one-fourth mile west of the intersection of Royal Road and Tryon Road, and a half a mile east of intersection of South Carwick Road and Tryon Road from the R one B, single-family residential zoning district classification to R two B townhouse and R three A, low-rise multiple-family residential zoning district classification, and this again is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsor, there are none, any public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments, there are no public comments, public comments are now closed, any comments or questions from the council? Any comments from the council, any comments from the council, there are none?
I'll make a motion to approve, support.
I have a motion by Councilman Dabney, a second by Mr. Beatry, Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Dr. Cora?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, and this ordinance has, has carried, thank you. Madam Clerk, by title only, ordinance on third reading, please?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending section one oh two dash one in the Michigan City Municipal Code to commonly known as removal of weeds, grass, and ranked vegetation, and this is introduced by Ms. Maldenauer.
Is there any comments from the sponsor?
No, I believe we're ready to pass this, thank you.
I would like to open this up for public comment, are there any public comments on this ordinance? Public comments on this ordinance?
Paul Pris Malinsky, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. We've been going over this for quite a while, and I want to bring up some facts to you. I stopped by a residence in the Second Ward today as I was coming home from work and he gave me some information. It says here, I'm not going to give you the name. It's a notice of violation. And it was sent out certified mail. It was infraction. The letter was sent out on four twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. And the action needed to be resolved by five-five-twenty-five. So that's about thirteen days. The point I'm bringing this out is that I believe that we all should have a uniform, a, a uniform notification system, not just singling one section out of the code. In that also, there's been no justification or any information presented to the council about the problem that they said that the individual, the appointed officials said that they had with ten days instead of five days on appealing this. Councilman Don Preszbalinski presented to you an amendment to not to count holidays or weekend days, and you voted that down. My, my thing is this, is that everybody has a right by the Constitution for due process. I think you, I think by the introductory of this, this amendment to the code, it's singling out homeowners, whether it be residential or private, people who invest in it. But I want to make this point in the Constitution. It's we, the people, for the people, by the people. You guys were elected by the people. Those individuals were appointed. They never cited to you any one case in this whole debate. They just said it was problematic. You need to think about that when you vote on this. I believe you should leave it the same and let the system go because it's more uniform to the rest of the code book on how people are notified, whether it be a developer or whether it be another code violation of some other sort in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preszbalinski.
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. I was just in McDonald's on Franklin Street today. And right behind McDonald's is a vacant house.
Can you speak a little bit more towards the mic?
Oh, yeah.
So I can hear you a little bit, please. Thank you.
I can hear myself through my ears. But anyway, the house is vacant and the grass is quite tall. Now, who do they notify on that? How do they notify someone now with the house being vacant? You know, do they go over there and cut it? Who do they charge for it now? Do they find who owns the property? That's, that's another issue with vacant houses sitting around. We have to take care of them. The city has to do it for them if nobody lives in it. Thank you.
Public com-
Scott Mellon, Turner County Place. In reference to the last public comment, this is not a new problem for municipalities. There's a legal owner of every property, taxpayer of record. Find it on Beacon. What municipalities do is they notify that person, whether or not we actually make contact with them. If we're forced to cut the grass for them, we charge them for it or put a lien on their property. That's how that is handled. This is not unique to Michigan City or any other municipality. There are solutions to that problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street. Uh, something else I'd like to point out. These ordinances shouldn't just apply to the people, they should also apply to the city. I have a city building next to me, the old police substation at Willard and Sixth Street. And those weeds will grow three, four, five feet tall sometimes during the summer. And nobody from the city comes out and does anything. And I never see code enforcement out there asking the city to do anything about it. So I think part of it too is the city's got to get their own properties taken care of as well as people having to take care of their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Yes, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. We need to reestablish a compost site. Now, last year, they won't let us take our compost or excess waste out to Hitchcock Street anymore. I think he's getting ready to, just run it like Ben Sherman does at the county out on Ziegler Road. He bring one pile for, for the brush and he's got one pile for the grass and the leaves. He's, he's got a really good slick operation out there. He does a great job. And I think that's what we need to do. They got, so you don't have to drive back in the mud and take out the, we really need to have that thing. You know, that's why you got all these brush piles laying around the city. We ain't got nowhere to take it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich.
Good evening, cell. Done that. I want to support Scott. And what he just said is, is that simple. There's an assessor, assessor rather, and there is a tax assesse. That's the person who pays the taxes. You send out a certified letter to whoever it is that owns it, giving them a certain amount of time to come and do it. No ifs, ands, or buts. And if they don't do it, let them know you're going to charge them up to five hundred dollars per lot. Per lot. You can't be playing around with these folk who are violating our neighborhood, violating our environment. It's just that cut and dry.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Uh, public comments are now closed. Are there any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
And this ordinance has passed. Madam Clerk, on new business, please?
The mayor is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding her new appointments of Gertrude Grayhan Farmer, replacing Jessica Bryant as member of the Michigan's Human, Human Rights Commission, with her term beginning immediately and expiring November second, two thousand and twenty-five. And Sharice Molsi, replacing Jamie Lauriness with her term beginning immediately and expiring November second, two thousand and twenty-five.
We vote. And we vote on this? So because they are the two for the same board of Gertrude Graham Farmer and Sharice Molsi, uh, we would like to acknowledge the advice and consent from Mayor Angie. And if we can take a vote, am I saying that correctly? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, starting off with the, the appointment of Gertrude Graham Farmer, Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Do I need a motion? I need a motion.
I so concerned.
Second. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Uh, Mr. Nelson?
Take one, correct?
No, we're voting them individually. And we're on Ms. Gertrude Graham Farmer.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations for the appointment to Ms. Gertrude Graham Farmer. Next, we will have entertain a motion for Sharice Molsi.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Cora, second by Councilman Nelson. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you and congratulations again, also to Ms. Sharice Molsi for her new appointment to this commission. Madam Clerk, on unfinished business, please?
We're going to take the vote this evening. The council has one appointment to the Michigan City Commission of Sustainability. Incumbent Andre John Davis, term expires May first, two thousand and twenty-five. Nominations for the vote are Kamish, Kamisha Williams, Eileen Mark, and Julie Smith.
Yeah. I would like, I would like to rescind my nomination for Eileen Mark since I received communication from her that she's withdrawing her application for the Michigan City Commission on Sustainability.
Was that received in the clerk's office?
I didn't get it.
Madam President?
Yes.
So the clerk's office hadn't received that, so we can't necessarily make that as a matter of record. But if that's something that you received, it's appropriate for you to report it. Uh, we just don't officially have it in the clerk's office.
I received it verbally and via email.
If you could forward me that, that would be great. Thank you.
So attorney here is, then we can just do, do we have to do the individual?
No.
No, so my understanding is these three people are eligible for nomination in
Whoever they name they give.
Correct.
Okay, so this will be by, okay, and so it will be based off of the three that are provided to us. And then you would just go, as she votes, call your name, you indicate the person's name.
Julie Smith is here to speak. I'd like to give her that opportunity, Madam President.
Um, yes.
I just wanted to request appointment to the Sustainability Board. I practice sustainability. I've worked with Daisy before. I won the Nora Schultz Sustainability Award the second year. I am a freelance court reporter as a trade and I have implemented sustainability practices at work. We only do e-transcripts. We don't print paper anymore unless you want to pay for it. Anyway, I would like the appointment to the Sustainability Board.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Are there any of the other nominees in attendance? If there are none, we will open, move forward with the vote for Kamisha Williams, Eileen Mark, and Julie Smith. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Mr. Beatry?
Uh, Julie Smith.
Mr. Coulter?
Julie Smith.
Mr. Dabney?
Uh, Kamisha Williams.
Dr. Cora?
Julie Smith.
Ms. Lee?
Julie Smith.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Julie Smith.
Mr. Nelson?
Smith.
And Ms. Tillman?
Smith. Yes, thank you.
We have one for Kamisha and seven for Julie Smith.
Congratulations, Ms. Julie Smith. And now, um, last on our agenda, we have comments from the public. I am opening this up for pub, comments from the public. Please keep in mind, your time is three minutes and they are comments, not Q and A. If you do have any direct questions, we ask that you address those either to the clerk's office or to the council, um, city email.
I, I, I need to express my disappointment in the Refuge and Sanitation Department. I have had two five-gallon buckets out front of my house for over a month with sticks in it from the storms blowing down, the big sticks from the trees. And I keep them picked up out of my yard so it can be cut because the sticks are so big. And I have called numerous times and nobody seems to want to pick them up. I don't know what's going on with, with the compost now. Now I got another one out there from grass cutting and leaves. And how much longer is that going to sit out there? I put it back by my garbage. They won't pick it up now. They claim the dump won't allow compost or leaves in the garbage. I'm wondering, did they close Hitchcock Street? That's where they always tuck the leaves and the compost and that. I can't get no answers from anybody. And I can't get them picked up. They come by yesterday with front-end loader and went down the alley and picked up a bunch of furniture and stuff like that that was put out. And I stopped the gentleman in the truck and asked him why they're not picking up the, the compost. And that was his answer. The dump doesn't want to in, in the dump. So the garbage won't pick them up anymore. They used to take them if I set them back by the garbage before the spring cleanup came. And I'm at a loss what to do with them. My milk carrier has to keep driving around them because they're set out front there. And I don't like seeing them out there all the time for over a month. Somebody needs to give me an answer.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Chair and councilpersons, I'd like to have you reflect just a second on the short-term rental ordinance that was passed back in
Excuse me, if you could, please state your name and your
I'm sorry, I'm Vivian Odd. I live at one oh five Felton Street. So the short-term rental ordinance passed back in two thousand and twenty-one. We've had four years now in my neighborhood dealing with this. And we really are asking that you reflect on this ordinance and perhaps revisit it and looking to strengthen this ordinance because we've had several issues with short-term rental owners. And this has become more and more problematic for our neighborhood and for the quality of life of those of us who live in that neighborhood. I have several neighbors here who will speak to specific issues that we have. But really, our ask is that we revisit, it's time to revisit this ordinance and to put some more teeth into it. Because with more and more visitors coming into our city, it is not allowing residents who live here year-round to enjoy their quality of life in Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diane Voe and I live at one thirty-eight Fogarty. I'm here because I live directly across from a couple of these larger units and I, that are rented out for Airbnbs. Um, I'm not against Airbnbs in general. It's just the size of the ones in our neighborhood now. They've just grown so huge. The landlord or owner of three of the units packages them on the website as fifty-plus people for all, the combined usage of all, of all the buildings. Um, we've had issues such as, um, I think it's been underage drinking, very young people, um, twenty, thirty people across the street. The units supposedly sleep twenty to thirty people apiece. They're huge. We've reported to the, um, local, you know, law enforcement and so on. And also the people that rent the units out. But it just continues. Uh, issues that we're having, especially is the noise beyond two AM. And it could be, this last Sunday, it was, um, I think each neighbor that I spoke with was woken up by two-thirty by the sounds from the partying across the street. Uh, there's a limited amount of parking on Fogarty. It's parking on one side only, a very narrow street with a hill. We get people flying up and down there. We're also, parking concerns are in competition with dunebillies, which is fine at the end of the street, but we've also got cool runnings and another restaurant that's going to be opening. So it's, it's, the parking situation is unreal. Behaviors that we've witnessed, and this is just within, it, it, it's a routine amount of behaviors. Urinating during the daylight hours in the yard, vomiting, people are vomiting. Nude, uh, hot tub bathers. They, they've got two hot tubs that the people are just, you know, it's, it's just like party central. They, they've got two hot tubs that the people are just, you know, it's, it's just like party central. Um, the, the concern too that we have, many of the homes are over a hundred years old in our neighborhood. And I don't believe that there's been any upgrades in, say sewage, you know, um, utilities and so on. And that is something that we foresee that'll be a, uh, an issue down the line, no doubt. Um, I would like you to please, uh, revisit the short-term rental ordinance. And as Vivian said, please put some teeth into it. Uh, limit, is there a, a limit of occupancy for each building, each home? Um, because they have a, one of the units has a loft and there's like six double king beds or what, you know, you can pack as many people in there as you want. It's just, it's just crazy. So please, uh, for the permanent residents especially, take a look at that for us if you would. And, um, we, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Excuse me. My name is Angie Longoria and I'm another one of the, uh, people that are here in response to what's going on with the short-term rentals. I would just like to say I'm not only a homeowner in, uh, the same neighborhood with the other two ladies, but I, we actually own a couple of short-term rentals in the same neighborhood. Um, so I'm definitely not against short-term rentals in general. I'm just, uh, definitely would like to see something being done about just like what Diane and Vivian mentioned, the, we have some properties that allow way too many, uh, people to stay, which creates a lot of noise like was mentioned. And it also creates a lot of trash. And, um, I, I absolutely love my neighborhood. I love Michigan City and I want to help keep the city clean. I like to help pick up the trash and the short-term rentals that are, you know, accumulating so much trash, it's being just blown all over the neighborhood. And then the long-term residents are the ones who are walking around trying to clean it up. So I would really love for the, um, council to revisit the ordinance and definitely the noise is an issue. Um, I've had a really hard time sleeping since probably, I don't know, mid-March because of some of these short-term rentals and the kids screaming, running up and down. And I say kids, but they're, they're definitely probably underage, uh, adults. And I know we were all young once, but, uh, I would love to see something being done about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Longoria.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time. I'm Jane McDonald, two thirteen Felton Street and live in the same neighborhood. As you know, there are no municipalities around us that allow short-term rentals. So Michigan City is party central. Uh, I agree with all of this foul language, partying, underage drinking, crazy driving, trash. And in addition to the trash, there are never, considering the number of people they pack into these houses, there are not enough trash bins. So many is the Monday morning where trash is packed into the bins, overflowing, thrown on the ground. Sometimes the bags are tied, sometimes not. The vermin get into them. It's a mess. On Fogarty and, uh, Oming, for instance, there were underage teenagers all weekend long who left early this morning. They were out drinking and partying, out. Now the bins are filled with trash, overflowing, and that trash has to sit there until Monday when the regularly scheduled trash pickup will be collected. So I'd like to raise the issue of these homes perhaps hiring a scavenger service to pick up their trash. It's an incredible burden on our, our garbage people. They're not gonna come twice a week. And yet, I have a place across the alley from me. Sometimes I have to sit and look at garbage and lawn debris for weeks at a time because they don't call and, and have it taken care of. So anyway, I was on the committee too to, um, write the short-term rental ordinance and I too would like to see it have some teeth. Charge fines for all the complaints. Every time the police have to come, every time you have to call the sanitation department. I worry about vermin like rats and raccoons and all of that invading our neighborhood just based on the volume of trash that sits after each rental and during each rental. So anyway, we would really like your consideration to improve the quality of our lives from March until November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I want to talk about the Michigan City area schools. I know you're not the school board. We are a very education-centric council. As was mentioned, the school board did unanimously approve the rename the LaPorte County Educational Center, the new, the new Woes Early Church Learning Center and the, where the automotive shops go and they, they dedicate that as the Dr. Barbara Easton Watkins Educational Center. And I think that's very appropriate they did that. My little, my little niece, sweet as a, you know, this daughter, little Nyari Seven, she just graduated from Head Start, a little four-year-old. She gets go back next year. She's not gonna be ready for kindergarten yet. And I think when she finished, when she cycles through high school, she's gonna right, she's gonna have a higher grad point average than all those that didn't attend that. And I think that's approved. And I think that's a miracle they put it. Great, great thing that they've did. We just, uh, established a fourth tier of our public education center, which all the students in my family are gonna continue to excel and dominate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. I would have, um, yes.
You have enough there? Thank you. Um, yes, sir. Um, my involvement in Chicago.
I apologize if you-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Cell, Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. My involvement in, in, um, uh, community work in Chicago involved me finding ways of trying to draw attention to how ugly conditions were. To the point that I became a psychic. I became a medium for vacant lots to talk through me. And if you would like, you can Google vacant lot psychic. Where I'm talking about this vacant lot. On behalf of this vacant lot, who knows how dirty and filthy it is? It knows what a, a degrading image it gives to the community. It talks about all of the bottles and cans and paper and trash that it collects and nobody picks it up. It even talks about blood. Where somebody bled out, actually bled out and died right there on that lot. Well, folk, what you have in front of you is the entrance to Michigan City on Michigan Boulevard. I can now tell you what overpass say. The first one's coming into Michigan City, that overpass. It says, where in the hell are you going? Or something to that effect. And get the hell out of here. That's the way it looks. Going out? It, it, it says, don't come back. I hope you had a flat. That's just how it looks. Now this is some very low-hanging fruit for us. I sent a picture to the mayor. She responded, says she had the funds to take care of that. I asked if that was the part of the overall redevelopment of Michigan Boulevard, or has she got the money right now? And asked her to get back to me. But we pass by that so much that we really don't pay any attention to it. In terms of how bad it looks. What an ugly image. And as you're coming into Michigan City, the guy right there at the Via Duck, he's done some beautiful, beautiful work, stonework. Further serving as a, as a welcoming on our behalf to Michigan City. I want to thank you for this time, but I also want to recognize these ladies. I want to thank you. There you go. But I want to thank those ladies for coming forward and, and talking about the damn pain that they're going through. All right? I don't appreciate folk entertaining themselves at my expense. They're making all that damn money? And the people going through hell. Now there's somewhere we can get something done about that.
With all due respect, Mr. Dunlap, could you please, on the cursing?
I'm sorry.
Could you please stop the cursing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My apologies to you. I'm still going to heaven though. But thank you for this time. And that's, that's, that's what my spirit is. I'm still having a problem with that work that was done there on Seventh and Michigan Boulevard. The contractor didn't level that off the way that he promised. We can't afford to let that happen. Our, uh, suit downside is really out of our hands, being able to make the person come back and do what they should be doing in terms of leveling that off and, uh, planting seeds. I'll let you know where I am with this next time I come back, but that's, that's real irritating for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Public, these two will be our last public comments. Well, oh, man. I'm sorry.
Well, my name is Tom Nazemec. I live at two fourteen Ann Street. And, uh, I wanted to reiterate with what Ms. Maldonar said earlier about Strible Pond. What began as a, uh, floodwater solution has turned into a tremendous asset. It's a natural resource. It's a recreational spot. And it's apparently on the Great Lakes Flyway for migratory birds. There's tens of thousands that visit every year. And with them come twice a year, all these birders with their long lenses, members of the park services from the Dunes National Park. And it should be shown as being a new, uh, at least for me, it's one of my favorite Michigan City attractions, and I urge people to visit it. Another reason I wanted to address you tonight is regarding the, um, rehabilitation center planned for the corner of Ann and Wabash Street. I want to thank you for all of you that attended that informational meeting, uh, during the week. The meeting, as it turned out, was more like an AA meeting than a meeting of neighbors for the proposed facility, at least on the evening, uh, meeting. We in the neighborhood are still concerned about the location of this facility and its effects on property values. It's close proximity to the neighborhood elementary school and the school bus stops as well as our personal and community safety. I would urge that a better location for this facility still be found rather than cementing this facility in the middle of our third ward, ward and our historic and beloved neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I said, um, excuse me, you could come on up, ma'am. Um, Mr. Chris Belinsky, I indicated that she was gonna be our last public comment and that public comments is gonna close after hers. I did, for the record. Even Mr. Mallon, he was like, what? Yes. I have the right to, I must say, public comments three times. And with that third public comment, it was too here and and Mr. Mallon made his comment and I indicated that. It's not a get-in-line. I have the right, uh, not a right. The requirement is I have to do public meeting, public call three times. I made public calls three times. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Eileen Mark. I, I was mentioned, uh, actually as I was walking in, I, I had applied to serve on the Sustainability Commission. Unfortunately, I'm here to speak on the reason, one, well, the reason I withdrew my, my application is that, um, I'm, I just had found out when I was here a few weeks ago to speak on my own behalf for the Sustainability Commission about the, uh, residents that is planned for, uh, those in recovery right across, literally right across from my home, right next to Tom's home who, who just spoke. And my reaction was I, I don't know if I'll be here in a year. I don't know if I wait a year with a construction zone in front of my home, if I'll be able to sell my home. And two, three, five years from now, if I'll be able to sell my home, if, if I don't want to be here anymore because of possible and unlikely adverse effects from a residence of this nature in, in front of my home. And, uh, I was really excited about the Sustainability Commission and, and it wa- it's, it's been heartbreaking to withdraw and really heartbreaking to hear this news. After I moved in a year ago, um, I live at the home and I know there, there's been much talk about short-term rentals and I very lovingly care for a short-term rental on my first floor. I would encourage any of you to please check out my listing. I, I have a card. I can give it to you. And you can see what the, the visitors to the community say about the stay at my house. I, I send them to wonderful businesses that we have right up on Franklin Street, Panini Panini's, a, a favorite as is Leeds and, and the vintage shops on Franklin and of course the National Park and, and they walk around the neighborhood and, and, and leave such great commentary. And unfortunately, uh, this, this residence and the construction and then the residents will most definitely uh, destroy that business. I have invested significantly into my home. I never would have purchased this home had I known this was in the works. And I'm told it was in the works for three years and they're coming in now at the eleventh hour. They invited us residents, homeowners, uh, business owners to a meeting last week. And we were blindsided and we were railroaded by those in recovery who shamed us for advocating for our nest eggs and our homes and our property values and our safety. I mean, I, 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 it was shocking. I, I literally had to walk out of this meeting. And we have a lot of questions that need answers still. That meeting did not answer our questions. We were there to be shamed. And we were set up. And I would like to request another meeting only for residents uh, that can prove that they live on Homer and Ann and, and a few other blocks that might be of concern around this committed, uh, around this community because we have a lot of questions. Is this a sound location with a elementary school half a block away? A bar a block away, another bar two blocks away, and a third bar three blocks away? Not to mention the marijuana dispensary strip in New Buffalo, a quick Uber ride away for free marijuana. And these are people who are struggling day in and day out with recovery. Not to mention those of us again who are going to, this is literally, you talk about not in my backyard. This is in our backyards. How literally in our backyards? I counted twelve parking spaces and there's gonna be twenty-five people living there? Where are they gonna park? In front of my house where my guests are supposed to park? Sixty percent of people who book Airbnbs at my residence and just in general are female. Females value their safety and it's mentioned in many of my reviews. Will they feel safe there with this going on? I, I don't believe they will. So I would, I would ask you for advocacy, consideration, an impact study, an independent, third-party, nothing to do with the Laporte drug-free, uh, program, a, a third party to, to really determine whether this is a sound location. They're getting a free lot and they are highly motivated by that and other donations. I think people are standing to make a lot of money on this deal. And I think it's not us on Ann Street and on Homer Street. So I really hope that there will be more discussion, uh, in a fair way for those of us who are, are living, uh, literally in the backyard of, of this proposed residence. Thank you for your time.
Public comments again is closed. Comments from the council.
Do you have them?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, one of the great things about having, uh, been a high school principal in Michigan City for, uh, for many, many years is that I've had the opportunity to meet many, you know, wonderful young men and young women. I wish we had everybody in the, in the stands that we had earlier. But in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, I had the honor to give a, a diploma to Elston Red Devil, uh, Megan Bogoslawski, who was, is, is now LaPorte County's first female Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame inductee. And I had forgotten about Megan's name, but I, not about Megan. And there was a great article in the News Dispatch. I, I cut, I cut it out. Uh, in Megan's, uh, senior year at Elston, uh, while, while she was a basketball at Els- player at Elston, they won three sectional titles and a Northern Indiana Conference title. And in her senior year, she averaged twenty-three point three points, eighteen point one rebounds, and three point five assists per game. She left, that, that sounds like Caitlin Clark almost. She left Elston, went to Western Michigan. Uh, that was a, um, they were mid-American, uh, conference pick- That was a, they were Mid-American Conference picks in 95 and 96. She averaged 19 points there, 8.6 rebounds there, and shot 63.7% mark that still stands for a basketball, a female basketball player at Western Michigan. She wasn't just a great basketball player. Megan was a great student, outstanding character, had a lot of charisma, respected by students and staff alike. And I remember her well, and I'm very proud of her. And Megan, I, I hope you hear about this. One last thing. Tommy mentioned earlier, I, I had the privilege of going to the ribbon cutting for the LaPorte County Career and Tech Education Facility, the new one. And I mentioned I was high school principal for many years. I know AK Smith. I was in charge of administering that thing for years and years. AK Smith worked its heart out for years with bad facilities and did the best good. Now, we have in Michigan City, state-of-the-art facility in, in Career and Tech. There are eight programs at the new facility, the South Campus, six at the old AK project. And I, I just can't say enough about it. I, it's just a wonderful facility. And they're doing a great job with kids who are working on the same things we're concerned about, workforce skills. And they've got a head up in this new facility in Michigan City. So great job on that, and I'm glad we've got them here. Thank you.
Ms. Molenauer?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have my usual announcement about Northwest Indiana Green Drinks. And it's going to be happening Thursday, June 5th at 6:30 PM. And our presenter is going to be Brian Forrest. He's a retired National Park Ranger, and he's currently a professor at Indiana University in Bloomington. He's going to be presenting a program on Harriet Colfax and Anne Hartwell. Harriet, as many of you know, was the lighthouse keeper for the old lighthouse, um, in the 1800s. And he'll also be talking about Anne Hartwell, who was a teacher in Michigan City of the public schools. And I want to acknowledge, last year, this was a presentation during Pride Month that was coordinated by city councilperson Greg Coulter. So I'm very pleased we'll be presenting this to a wider audience and to more people in Michigan City who said, oh, I missed it. I'm so sorry I missed it. I really wanted to hear it. And you can join this presentation via Save the Dunes Facebook Live, or you can get a Zoom link for it from M, that's E-M at savedunes.org. Again, that's E-M at savedunes.org. And I'm really looking forward to hearing this a second time. It was a very exciting presentation and also very informative of two very formidable women who were significant members of the Michigan City community when we were considered a frontier town.
Councilwoman Colton?
Thank you, Madam President. So I've had a couple days where I've gotten to meet with some constituents in both Esport and then, of course, the, the residents in Canada Park that we just talked to. First, I wanted to talk about some of the things going on in Esport. The big one is that we had spring cleanup this last couple of weeks, and they seem to have missed Esport. So there's some piles there that we need to talk about. But also, there's just some rowdy kids that are, are running through people's yards, so working on that a bit. But it's, it's very similar to the complaints that we have coming from Canada Park neighbors that we talked about just now. So listening to the stories from Vivian, Diane, Angie, and Jan, Jane, excuse me, about some of the, it's, it's apparently high school kids that are coming out here for post-prom. It seems to be post-prom. Every year, it seems to be post-prom. Last year, there was a story of the, there's, there's the building beside my, the one I live in. They're always talking about like, like what side are we gonna throw up off of? Just organizing that. So that's the experience we're having in Sheridan Beach. On top of that, last year, there was a story where one of the kids had like gotten, trying not to swear, but so drunk that he fell asleep in the street. Those are problems that we need to fix. So when Vivian, Diane, Angie, and Jane are bringing up problems with noise, parking, and nudity, yeah, these are things that we need to work on. So I'm interested in hosting a workshop, I think, just to kind of go through some of the options. I know that the legal options are super limited. But finding something, yeah. It's, it's difficult living in Michigan City and looking at New Buffalo, where in Michigan, they have rights to limit these things. And in Indiana, we just, the statehouse seems to be against us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the council? I just have a couple. One is, we were given a little flyer on this evening that indicated on Sunday, May 11th, Mother's Day, a local band known as Plus One will be giving a concert at Krieger Memorial Hall on Liberty Trail in Michigan City. Plus One consists of two brothers, Jimmy and Joy Beala. These boys lost their mothers to cancer two and a half years ago. And the performance on Sunday is intended to honor mothers. Any mother attending will, with a paying guest, will be admitted free of charge. Doors open at 5:30, and the show begins at 6:00 PM. Also, a reminder of Let's Talk Solutions, the Michigan City Matters Town, Matters Town Hall meetings with the mayor. The next one is scheduled for Wednesday, May 22nd, 2025, at 5:30 PM at the Squat Post, 121 Skewatt Legion Ave. And one more? Also, you're all invited to the Water Tower Park ribbon cutting, food, games, and giveaways. Join us in our free community celebration to honor the grand opening of the newly renewed renovated park and investments of over $1 million, Saturday, May 31st, 2025, at 11:00 AM Central Standard Time at the Water Tower Park. Also, as a reminder, this Friday, May 9th, 2025, they will be holding the LaPorte County Peace Police Memorial Service at the FOP, and that is open to the public. If there are no more comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ms. President.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. You're supposed to have the last comment, but I was looking for something in my computer while you were asking. I couldn't find it. But a quick announcement about park stickers. Can I take a second about, just to get this information out here? And people, I hope they're paying attention. I hope this is published somewhere. I'm gonna put it on my page and, as well, about our park sticker. When you can pick yours up. And these will be picked up at the North Point Pavilion. And this is how it's gonna work. It's gonna be from Friday, May 1st through July 3rd of this year. And people say, well, that's only a, a couple of months, but that's a couple of months. Get down there and pick up your sticker. And the office will be open from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, closed on Mondays. But it'll be 10 to 6, and then on Saturday, May 3rd through June 28th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I'm kind of reading notes. I didn't have this together, so it sounds like I'm all over the place. That is why. And this is what you need to do to get your sticker. Bring current vehicle registration. Paper copy will not be accepted. If you live outside of the, the civil city limits but own property within the civil city limits, please bring your current vehicle registration card and a utility bill or tax bill with the address of the property you own. The name on the vehicle registration must match the name on the tax or utility bill. So I'm really just saying this so that you, you perk up and get ready to pick up the park sticker. I know we had complaints last year that the timeframe was too short. I mean, people were waiting to the end of the summer to go pick up their park sticker. But please get down there and take care of this. And once again, city residents, it is free to pick up your sticker. So get down there and take care of that, so we don't have some of the issues that we had at the end of the summer last year. Thank you.
Thank you. May I entertain a motion to adjourn at this time?
Sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.